Welcome everyone to the Zone Board Meeting of October 24, 2023. My name is Mike Atkins, I'm the chairman. The vice chairman, Mr. Ray Dell. It's Mr. Himmel, Mr. Chin, Mr. O'Brien. Uh, the director is behind me. Uh, Mr. Carlin. Mrs. Noonan is our clerk. If you have a cellphone, please put it on silent or vibrate so don't interrupt the meeting. If you're gonna speak, please step outside. Uh, can I have a motion to waive and accept the minutes for the last meeting, please?
Chairman, they make a move in the way and accept the previous minutes from October 10th. October 10th, 25.
Second.
On the motion, saying that all in favor?
Aye.
Vote some more. Under full business. Oh, no, wait a minute, I got time, this one. Oh, uh, Mr. Chin, if you please, anyone that's gonna speak tonight, please stand up, raise your right hand. If you're gonna speak tonight, if you don't take an oath, you will not speak. If you don't take an oath, you will not speak.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth from the matters now on hearing?
Thank you. Thank you. Under full business, case number ZB 2338. I have a motion here from, uh, I have a letter here, I'm sorry, from, uh, the client, what he wants to do is withdraw. Can I have a motion to withdraw without prejudice?
Mr. Chair, ZB 2338, JCV, JCVT Architect for Varianes, two and a half story side story addition, two car garage on the basement level of the premise number 28, first parkway, Quincy, and make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
On the motion, saying that all in favor?
Aye.
Vote some more. Further into full business, ZB 2359, JV, JCVT Architect LLC, constructing a three-story, two-unit townhouse, dwelling on the premise number zero South Street. Is the applicant a representative here?
Yes.
Name and address.
We heard it a few weeks ago, it's old business. We heard the case originally a few weeks.
Somebody old business.
So it's old business.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jim Chen, Architect, uh, representing property owner at Zero South Street. Um, so back at our September, um, hearing, we presented a free disposal, uh, which the board was not in favor of it because due to the size of the, uh, being too big. So since then, uh, the current proposal we submitted has been scaled down. One foot was cut off on either side, um, of the townhouse, uh, which leaves a side effect of 10 feet. And additional five feet, uh, was cut off in the entire back of the building.
How many feet?
Five feet. And, and also the entire space behind the garage on the lower level has been eliminated. So, uh, this, this will still be a townhouse style with a two-bedroom plus a home office, uh, with two and a half bathroom. And, and two, two-car parking garage per unit. So the gross area for the two proposed units, uh, is 3,123 square feet, uh, each unit having approximately 1,500 square feet. Uh, with the reduction of the area, we're still requesting for, uh, a relief on the FAR. Uh, the current FAR is 0.48, where, um, point four is allowed. So, um, comparing to last time, uh, it's a big reduction of, uh, FAR.
No, and I see it just went away, couldn't get to like 20 feet each unit instead of, what I'm looking at is 22, correct?
Right. Uh, the, the reason for that is the, uh, the entrance plus the, the size of, you know, the width of the two parking spot, that, that's probably the minimum that we can get, get to the width.
No questions at this time.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Is there anyone, you can have a seat, if anyone speaks in favor. First call, second call, third call closed. Uh, it's the same letter? Nope, same letter, October 20, October 14. Thank you, thank you.
101723, from, we have a great, we have reviewed the submittal for the above referenced project and our comments are as follows. One, specify how much of this area will be increased through the development. Two, provide plans showing the existing site conditions, layout of utility grading, drainage and construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, provide dimensions and grades from the paving area and all driveway entrances. Five, explain how to remove the huge bedrocks and ledges on the site for construction. Will any blasting be used? Six, upon completion of the project, add a plan showing all utilities and building footprints need to be submitted along with a digital file.
Call it, probably, close. If anyone here, phones right inside, please step forward, naming that in this sort of record, please. Thank you for coming tonight, man.
Excuse me.
I promise I won't be knocked.
My name is Sandra Velazca, live at 95 Mottington Street. And I just think that we have enough apartments in Quincy. Enough is enough. I mean, it's so tight, you're giving it a zero between 219 and 199. Doesn't that tell you that enough is enough? The congestion, the traffic is enough, that it, we have road rage, we have too many traffic lights, stop signs, you can't get across Quincy without, it taking a half an hour, where it never did in the past. I just think, let's stop for a while. It's a very small lot, I drove by it, I live around the corner.
What do you think should be there? What do you think, what should be there?
Should be there?
Yeah.
Nature.
Nature, okay.
We're so busy cutting down trees that let's leave it alone. As God intended.
God intended it all.
Otherwise, why else would we have to give it a zero for a street number?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else opposed right aside? Second call?
John Orifel, 62 Grandwall Road. Which, in the assessor's page, like which map and block is it? Like what's the number? Like I can't, I don't see it there.
1957.
So 1957, so it's the one that says 2085A?
Yes.
Is that the one we're talking about? Okay.
To the left of that, right.
Right, so am I correct? So that lot size is 5,838?
6139.
6139, okay, that's all I wanted to know, because I couldn't look it up. Thank you.
Any comments? Um, two-family house.
I have, um, um, no comment, um, I.
Thank you.
I think the plans are good.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed right aside? Third call? Call it, party hearing closed. Before I close that, there's a, there's a letter of proposal, I'd like to read it for the record.
Writing the vo, uh, this is from Richard Ash, 14 Mount Street, Brandonington voiced some residents' concerns about the following proposal. Uh, property is on the, is right on the line of Ward 2, uh, and Ward 5. I had the chance to speak with many Ward 2 residents in the Elm Street, South Wall Mountain Street, Union Street area over the weekend. Many residents voiced concern over the size of the project and the need for lawn-own landscaping and parking, surely with six total bedrooms. Street per unit, there needs to be more than six parking spaces to aloft the guests. All the residents I spoke with concerned with the parking for both Dennis Sweeney's funeral home and the Elm Street Park. Patrons of both the funeral home and the park currently utilize the undeveloped lot that is the subject of the proposal. The fear is that people will not be forced to use the street. As the board knows, both Elm and South Streets are well-traveled, narrow two-lane hills. Elm Street also has a significant bend, parking on either sides of these streets, even in the short term, is dangerous. I apologize that I'm unable to be present, thank you for reading this email into the record.
You put the address in?
I did, I spread it out.
I didn't hear it.
Yeah, that's all.
Last call? Party hearing closed. Uh, yeah, I, I personally, I mean, I, I know what you're trying to do. I know you're trying to fit something in there and make it all work and get it to, I mean, there's no reason you couldn't have cut that down to 20. I mean, I probably should have said that the last time you were here, but I mean, you know what, two cars, 18 feet wide, so I think you, so personally, I think that's still too much from here. I think you can shrink that down a little bit, but it's just me, one out of five. I'll get that. The Himmel?
I think it's too large, too much, I'm not in favor of it.
Um, yeah, it is on the large side, and especially on the side setbacks.
The way it goes, you watch, yeah.
It's a deep lot, it's 6,000 square foot lot, it could, it could stand some.
It's a challenging lot, that's what.
It is, it is challenging. It is, who knows what should go there.
I mean.
It's raised B.
Wait, wait.
Is it considered a side? No, it's a front end.
Yep.
Just a little of the front end.
Right, don't have a front, I mean, it's not a side setback, don't have the.
No, no, but I mean, like, I'm just wondering, like.
You got this real.
I always look at these, the worst-case scenario, is there something else that could be put there? You know, if he went, he, he still wouldn't have to come for advantage for the front setback, but.
Probably get a basic two-family in there.
Twenty by three, I mean, he comes down, he slows down. I mean, you rent them, so that's, you know, you look for rental space, I guess, looking for big new homes and nice homes and big homes, that ain't the lot. I think we asked him once, so, you can ask him twice and say no, it's up to us. Mr. Chin?
Um, I'm. Yeah, I, I'm undecided, I would, I would lean, if there's something else, I think it'll win there, but.
I don't see what.
I mean, when it's gonna cost you to clear that lot, you know, that's kinda.
Mm-hmm. But at the same time, we've gotta look at, like, you know, what's good for that? I, I, I mean, I don't know, it's, it's a tough lot, it is a tough lot, I get it, it's a tough lot. And you know what, if you want a two-family in there, you're gonna have to shrink it maybe, right? Shrink it down, twenty by three, two small units. The work will work, don't worry, you won. So can't all buy stuff to make a fortune? Some, some, some of you don't get what we like.
It's, it, it. No, no, was it split by this? Must have been something.
Well, something, yeah. It's probably split by a ton of something, it's way back. Look at the way that, where they cut the, the back too.
It was almost like that was the remainder.
It was exactly, with the left hole. Right. And someone wants to build two units there, well, bring him down, shrink him up. Anything else? Still Brian?
No, I'm good, thanks.
All right. So what's the consensus here? It doesn't look good, so you wanna give it another shot? You wanna vote on it? You wanna deny it? You wanna bring him back a little house, couple of, a single-family big house there? I don't know.
The lot's too small for what he's got.
Yeah, I feel the same way.
Yeah.
Now?
Maybe a different proposal.
Hang on. Have a motion, you want, you wanna vote on it, and then you can come back with a different proposal altogether?
You go.
Wait a minute. I will ask you when it's time, sorry.
No, I said, I looked at him, that's why.
Okay.
I can't even test him.
Let's not finish talking first. So Brian, what's your vote to treat that? I mean, are we looking at decent, single-family house in that lot, or you wanna put a two-family in there, a little team? You got six units.
A small two-family would work for me, but, you know, also a single, I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna think, oh, it's gonna work for them.
Right.
You know, I mean, they're, they're getting there.
Yep.
And they complied with what our requests were for.
Shrink it, they did, they did, yeah, it's just a little still.
And then you keep looking at it, but it's still pretty big.
Yeah.
I mean, facing the street, it's big, if it was turned sideways.
It would look weird though, wouldn't it?
Next to it, there's a pink sideways.
Well, there's all kinds of.
Pink sideways.
I'm, I'm same with Charlie.
The Himmel?
Too big, too much, needs to come back, or something different.
Something di, different, different. Smaller or something different completely?
Smaller.
Small. Twenty by three work, anything, I don't know.
If it works for them.
If you add something to him, and if he's done, he can come back and just, come up with a brand-new proposal and look at it again. Yep.
If we're on either side, it's gonna change your parking situations, your travel.
Exactly.
It's, it's not.
It's not, it's not, but it, but, but it is, it is. Because when you get into that size, you get into other bedrooms, you get into other this, other that.
Yeah, but everybody works from home, big days.
Like there's more parking, there's kids, then you get kids, and you get young kids, and there's 16-year-olds, and then there's cars, and then there's traffic. It's just, that lot could get eight cars. I mean, let's get ripped, we always had one driveway, one car, right? Well, I did. One car for a family, now we get five.
You go.
One can never go back. You'll have like space cars, that's about it, debts and stuff.
Full lung cars.
Yeah, full lung cars, they're going to breathe fast like. All right. Want a motion to deny, or you wanna let them go? Come back.
Go to more tarare.
All right. Withdraw without prejudice?
Yes.
Have a motion.
JCVTs, uh, ZB 2359 JCV Architect for Varianes, construct a three-story, two-unit townhouse on the premise number zero South Street, Quincy, make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
On the motion, saying that all in favor?
Aye.
Vote some more. Further into tonight's agenda, new business, Joseph Paul, Sir Varianes could build a second story addition on a mudroom. And a screen porch, renovate the garage in the existing home, 61 Pelican Road. The applicant and the representative here.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Follis, and I live at 61 Pelican Road. My husband Joseph wanted to be here tonight, but he was unable to come due to a work commitment. I am joined by Daryl Shumway of Sun River Builders, who will be doing the work on our property. We are seeking to renovate our house and garage to make more space for our family. When we moved to Adam Shore eight years ago, we had one child and one on the way. We now have four kids ages 10 and under, living in the same one-and-three-quarters-story, three-bedroom bungalow. This project will make our home a two-and-a-half-story house with five bedrooms. It will give us more room to fit beds and dressers for the kids, and cause the space to properly store our belongings. We would like to expand our current mudroom on the back entrance of our first floor to provide storage for our coats, shoes, backpacks, and her vacuum.
Excuse me, women, counselor. What they're gonna do is they withdraw it so they'd have to build a whole new proposal, so you'll get a whole new notifications and everything if that comes back, sorry. Go ahead, man.
We would like to expand our current mudroom on the back entrance of our first floor to provide storage for our coats, shoes, backpacks, and our vacuum. Our current first floor does not have any closets for these items. Additionally, we would like to renovate our garage since the roof and doors are failing. We would like to add space above the garage for storage, so we can actually use the garage itself for our cars. We plan to move seasonal decorations, camping gear, sports equipment, bins of hand-me-down clothing for the kids, bikes, scooters, strollers, tools, and lawn furniture up off the ground level, so that we can store our cars there, especially in the winter. We would also like to add a screen porch on the side of the garage where there is currently an underutilized pave area. This porch would provide us with a bug-free space to eat and enjoy the yard during the warmer months. We have reached out to our neighbors in July, and we provided them with our plans. We have not received any complaints about the project. Instead, we received several letters of support, which we have submitted to you, and I have copies if you need them. We do not believe our plans will have a negative impact on our neighbors or the neighborhood. Rather, it will improve the overall appearance of our property. We love Adam Shore, and we really wanna stay here, but we need more space to do so. I am a third-generation Quincy resident, and our kids are fourth-generation residents. Our family have been active citizens in Quincy for over 65 years. My husband and I volunteer as leaders or coaches with the Cub Scouts, the Girl Scouts, and Quincy Youth Soccer. We are also board members for the Adam Shore Neighborhood Association. We want to continue to serve our community in these roles, and we want to raise our family here around the corner for many of our relatives in the Adam Shore Neighborhood, Post Island, Husnek, and Germantown. We hope to receive approval for this project so we can stay here to do all of this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and you have a nice set of plans here, all right, I see everything. Now, my only question about this proposal is the second floor in the garage they were with. Uh, and then somewhere right in there, that you might park a car in the garage. So, is it gonna be just really all storage in there, or is there gonna be?
That's the plan.
Garage.
The plan is for storage, so we can use the top for all the things that I mentioned that we have currently on the ground floor. We do not store the cars in there right now, there is no room.
Right now, no. We hope to, after this is built, right?
Especially if you have some also.
Yeah.
Yep.
You got the right plow guy. Uh, no, it's, it's pretty, it's a beautiful home there, it's my favorite, beautiful lot, gorgeous lot. So, when we're looking at it, you're gonna take that garage, you're gonna put it out, and you're gonna have a, on a piece of hot trot, you're gonna put, uh, it'll be like a tent, almost, right? Screened-in porch.
Mm-hmm.
What are you putting on the floor? Nothing?
Uh, whatever they decide, I think we were planning on keeping the asphalt that was there, wanting to keep with the footings, you know, fire from whatever I destroyed with the footings, just put the footings.
So it's just gonna be an open, let me know, uh, water out there or anything?
No.
Okay. Those are my questions. It's a beautiful, beautiful, really beautiful lot.
Thank you.
Really, really pretty.
Almost a double lot, it's almost a double lot, yeah. Oh, I didn't say it wasn't a double lot.
No, 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 it is pretty, it's beautiful, it really is. I like the way the garage is set, so you can pull in, pull in, and still get plenty of room over there.
No questions.
No questions.
No, that's good. Great addition.
Yeah, you're also a good plan, good tag. You can have a seat, is there anyone here who wants to speak in favor? First call?
Good evening, uh, my name is Thomas Kelly, 11 Shelton Road, Quincy. Full disclosure, I'm her father. They, they live three, four streets away from me, I wanna keep them there.
You wanna make sure the.
I wanna make sure they stay in the neighborhood.
Make sure the father.
Yes, sir.
Make the kids stay there?
It's a, it's a great lot, as you said, it's a, it's a great plan, uh, love to see it go through, to give them the room that they need.
Thanks for the full disclosure, that was.
Yeah. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor? Second call? John?
John Orifel, 62 Grandwall Road, 100% in favor of this, uh, it's a great plan, um, in favor always of people being able to expand their houses so they can stay in Quincy with their extended families, thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else who wants to speak in favor? Last call? I have a letter here from the, uh, DPW, they reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed right aside?
I'm just in support, they're on my.
Oh, whoa, 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 sorry. You for support? Oh, okay. Name and address, and.
You got it.
That'll be pretty good.
My buddy Don Uvenetti at 44 Pelican.
Donny?
He is, uh, 100% in support. There you go. Uh, Millikens at 55 Pelican, directly next door, cannot pay to make the public, it's long overdue for them, and we look forward to them adjusting to their much-needed, better-to-live in situation. Uh, I can't read the name, Don Lee, 54 Pelican Road, Christine Big, uh, 60, so she's at 54 Pelican Road and in support. John Martin at 67 Pelican Road, support. And Keith and Michelle Gott at 20 Petrow Road, and they are in support as well. Looks like people.
I got a letter here from Dave McCarty, that he's in full support of your project, and they wish you could be here, but you're on the other side of the state tonight. Is there anyone opposed right aside? First call, second call, third call closed. Uh, it's a beaut, it's a beautiful place. I was looking for shelter out there when you had all those kids, and I'm like, where they? It's like, a couple of kids over here, something. I'm only teasing. Beautiful, beautiful lot, gorgeous lot, thank you.
I'm pretty good. ZB 23, second floor, Joseph Paul, Sir Varianes could build a second story addition at a mudroom, screened-in porch, renovate the garage, the existing home on the premise number 61 Pelican Road, Quincy, and make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, saying that all in favor?
Aye.
Vote some more. Want any set of plans, you need any access? Nope, okay.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Now the fun begins.
Now the fun.
Yeah, sorry, I'm bleeding.
I'm looking for.
That's all right, buddy.
Uh, further into business, STR 239, David Ben Olfay, for a special permit to operate a short-term rental business on the premises number 347 Center Street, is the applicant and representative here.
Hi, I'm Alexis, I'm.
Wait, wait till you get up there, because we.
Yeah, we didn't get up there, sorry.
We brought her up here, sorry.
Apologies, hello, I'm Alexis.
No, take your time, I couldn't even walk yesterday.
I also live at 347 Center Street, I'm here on behalf of David, who could not be here tonight.
Okay.
I admit, I'm, you know all this, so I'm.
That's right, we'll walk you through it, don't worry.
That's perfect, I need assistance in walking.
Yeah. So tell us what, uh, have you, has the property ever been operated as a short-term rental?
Um, not as, my knowledge, with us being the owners of it, we moved in, uh, last fall, it's been almost a year now.
Okay.
And, I mean, we had been operating it, we did not know that we needed to.
Yeah, no, 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 that's.
No, we know, we're not, we're not.
But prior to that new situation, yes.
Yeah, some of them in that interval.
We just wanna make sure, like, that you've had a good experience, or like, we wanna know about your experience as a short-term rental, how it's worked.
What's going on?
Okay, so while we were, we're doing it before we realized that we needed to.
Yeah, sure.
Um, no, it, it had been, uh, going well, I think, uh, we, we have a, a room inside our unit, um, that we.
Is it just a single room that you're renting?
It's a single room in the unit that David and I are in, and then there is a couple of rooms, so it's a two-family, so there's first floor, second floor.
Okay.
So there's a room on the first floor, and then there are.
They rent out.
What's that?
They rent in your unit.
Correct, and then.
Now, the second unit, you rent out for.
That is, I mean, while we are all the owners of the residence, it's like David and I are the first floor, and then his sister is.
Okay.
The second.
The same family?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Um, from my understanding of the situation, she is also looking to rent out her top two rooms.
Okay.
What top two rooms, third floor?
Uh, so first floor's got one room.
Yep.
Second floor is two.
Probably don't have that one.
Just two rooms?
Two bedrooms.
How many, how many, how many, how many rooms are in the second floor?
How many bedrooms?
How many bedrooms? Two.
Oh, so you want to rent out the whole thing for short-term, the whole unit?
Um, so, uh, uh, I, the, from my knowledge, I thought I was here for, maybe they were only trying to do the first floor. I'm sorry, I'm.
That's all right, okay.
Let me ask the director, Mr. Director.
Maybe at this time, we're only looking to do the first floor, and I am a little confused.
No, 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 you were just looking, you said, the, the, the application is resides on the first floor.
Okay, so it is just for the first floor.
But the rental.
I might have gone ahead of myself, yes. I'm so sorry.
The first floor is where you live.
It is, and there is a.
The second floor is what you want to rent out, so you don't want to do that.
No, I, um, I might be, uh.
Well, is people.
Jump in the gun, yes.
Probably might have to, because if it's read like that, that's, that's not fair to the public either.
Yeah, our home is, it says, our home is a two-family home, the family resides in the first unit, and uses the second floor unit as a Airbnb. So I think there's some confusion about what we're trying to look at, so.
You think that's getting any of the neighbors that you would not tell them that they want to rent one bedroom out and then bust the other?
They would change the product.
It wouldn't change, I, I get that, I just would, would it? How people understand, I went, and she's got her three bars up there, not, I don't know. Or do you just do what we say here, and if she wants to change it, come back? Do that?
That would work.
All right, we can do that.
Yeah, I'm also, okay, that's my.
If it's in here, which says the first floor you live in, the second floor is what you're going to rent.
Okay.
That's what we're going to consider.
That's what we're going to consider, because that's the only thing the public saw.
Absolutely, understood, yes.
Okay, now you have the floor, tell us why you want to rent the second floor.
Oh, well, it would. Help us to pay for our mortgage.
Okay.
Uh, which would be the, the primary, or probably the main, only reason. Um, we, myself and David are, are both, uh, I'm, I'm partially disabled, and he has his own health issues, and so while we are both employed, it isn't always consistent, he recently had a health issue that took him out of work for some time. And so, our goal is to, to, to supplement that.
All right, so, so here's my question, you said there's two other owners?
Yes, I mean.
Now, they live upstairs?
No.
No, they just don't?
Correct.
So, so they, so what we can do is what you're asking for?
Yes.
First floor you live in, no rental on the first floor?
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
We all got the same thing?
Yep.
So we're not, okay. You can have a seat, we all understand, you can take, take a seat.